Which at this point is scheduled for March the 9th as a special city council meeting. We'd like to meet at 4:30 at the Big M Building because it doesn't have electricity. And so we're going to need as much daylight as we can to get through that particular building. We will continue on with the building tour at the Wells Fargo Building at 6 o'clock later that evening. So you want to bring snacks, you'll also want to bring flashlights, you want to dress warmly. One of the buildings is not heated essentially or poorly heated. There's no ADA access at the Big M Building right now because the elevators are broken. So you'll have to hike the stairs up and down. So if you're not feeling up to the eight or so floor, hike up and down, that'll be something you'll want to be attentive to. And as I mentioned, we'll start that at 4:30 in the lobby of the Big M Building. After you go through the buildings with the architects, you'll have an opportunity to sort of ask them questions about the reports and also what you've seen. That's the whole idea of getting you the reports out first. So that way you can identify or before you go, any areas that you have a concern or you want to see firsthand and then use that report as your guide to essentially going through the building. So that's the hope at least going through. After that happens, then we do plan to bring back to you for your consideration, the finalized architectural report and the city staff's recommendation along with the technical team's recommendation for the City Hall relocation project. And we expect that to occur on March 16th. Next up, we'll talk a little bit about the gathering space. We have moved on to Site 3, as you know. We have been informed that we do have a very willing seller on Site 3. The environmental review process has already been underway and we imagine that to conclude essentially officially sometime this month. We are expecting the release of funds shortly thereafter. And so it looks like you'll have at least as an option, Site 3 to consider as the gathering space moving forward. I understand that this is one of the projects that you'll likely want to discuss at the special city council meeting on February 24th. And so we will not do anything other than carry out the work that's already been directed of us and not start anything new until we get confirmation at this February 24th meeting that this project is still as anticipated in moving forward. So that's what I have for you on the gathering space. As I've already mentioned a few times, maybe just throw it out there one more time, the NDR program, National Disaster Resiliency Program, and all of the projects will be up for discussion at the special city council meeting on February 24th. That meeting will happen in this room, council chambers, at 5:30 PM. Go as long as you'd like it to go. We will have a conversation about whatever you want as it relates to the NDR program, if it means moving money or reprioritizing or any of those sorts of things, substantial amendments, technical amendments, whatever it is that you're interested in discussing, we can do that at that special city council meeting. So for the public, this would be a great opportunity for them to come as well. I don't know if you intend to take testimony or not, certainly something you can decide later. But we do want to make sure everyone's aware because we stepped into the National Disaster Resiliency Program with an enormous amount of community input and involvement. It makes sense to continue that in this conversation as well. Moving forward, let's talk a little bit about the census. As you know, this is a, this is a new decade and with the new decade comes a new census count or at least an official count. This is very, very important to the city of Minot because we are right on the cusp of reaching the 50,000 person population number. And of course, if we reach that 50,000 person number, then we will become an entitlement city and that means we will be eligible for potentially anywhere between 350,000 to maybe upwards of $500,000 of annual community development block grant funds that we will not have to compete for if the program still remains as it is today. So that's important and that's why it is so important that we count every single person in our community. And of course, to be counted, all you have to do is live here for six months and one day. So that means students, it means military, it means anybody can be counted if they live here for six months and one day. The committee has been fast at work. I want to thank Alderman Olson for her leadership as well as our community development director, Brian Billingsley, and a whole host of other community leaders for advancing this important work. They've adopted a new slogan, "More Means More." And just for the reasons I said, the more people we have, the more money we, we earn. The census actual day, the accounting day is officially April 1st, but the activities that will be occurring between now and April 1st and even after April 1st are going to be varied and there are going to be many. So this team is one, a very small number of community count or census community count teams that are out there in the state of North Dakota and their work is extremely important. So we're excited for what this is going to mean for us. You'll, you'll start seeing a lot of advertising and marketing that will take place. We were very successful in getting multiple grants from the state and, and pass through through the federal government for the advertising and marketing. You'll see a couple of our sanitation trucks get wrapped with awareness campaigns and so on and so forth. Number of different things, flyers and media and those sorts of things will all be out there. So you'll start, you'll start to, we'll start to get everybody excited about this. Next, I wanted to just update you on a conversation I had with the interim taxation committee down at the State House last week. I was asked to go as one of four or five cities to report on their special assessment revenue replacement study. You might recall that during the legislative session this year, House Bill 1474 was a revenue replacement, actually it was a revenue addition that was added called the utility tax, essentially another way to collect revenues that would allow cities to maybe not use or not use as much special assessments for the collection of costs or revenues associated with development and other sorts of infrastructure. That was, that was changed a few, went through a few iterations through the legislative process and eventually through that process, it kind of worked itself into a replacement fee, if you will, or tax, and then eventually it got sort of remanded to a study. So the committee had asked for various cities to come and sort of speak on the issue and sort of tell them what we thought about it. And so I just thought I'd share you a couple of brief highlights. You know, special assessments for us are important, but they're not nearly as important as a revenue stream for many other communities around North Dakota. In fact, our special assessment revenue as a proportion of our fiscal year 2020 budget only accounts for just over half of 1% of our total revenue. It's remarkably small. In fact, that was only about 1.7 to 1.8 million dollars of our total budget for last year. We only have currently about less than 2,000 properties or 10% of all properties in the city that have some sort of special assessment that's tied to them. And our average special assessment is less than $600. That's average across the city. This is for a number of reasons. One, we don't have a lot of special assessments. And for two, we provide 50% generally of the cost in municipal funds toward the special assessment, which means we only assess essentially half the total cost. The other reason we don't have a lot of high special assessments is because we have a policy where growth pays for growth. That means if you have a, if you're a new developer and you want to build infrastructure and build a new community, say a residential subdivision or apartments or whatnot, more than not, I think almost 98% of the time, we are requiring those developers to install that infrastructure at their cost and tie that cost directly to the sale of the house, the rental of the apartment or whatever it is. So we don't have a lot of special assessments like other communities do for that reason. When it came to our thoughts about House Bill 1474, I made it very clear that we are not looking for any kind of bill that would eliminate the use of special assessments, even though we don't use them very much. They are important tools and we don't want to lose that tool in our toolbox. We also want to preserve local control. And so I made that clear to the taxation committee that preserving local control and allowing flexibility for the collection of revenues is really important to us and that we wanted to preserve that. And then also, we didn't want, well, we were open to a variety of different funding alternatives as long as it didn't take any of those alternatives off the table for us today. In the end, the taxation committee essentially killed House Bill 1474. And so any work on this in the form of a utility tax will have to come back through the regular legislative process. So essentially it's as if it never happened. That was the result of the committee, which is fine with us essentially. I think for Bismarck and maybe a couple of other communities, there might be some more disappointment there. But we are open, like I say, to other funding considerations. Let's move to the parking structures just really quick. We have a number of updates to provide for you on the parking ramps. The cleaning and repair of the parking ramps is essentially done. We're excited about that. We have replaced lighting, we've cleaned, you know, a number of different things inside the parking ramps. The roofing is on both structures, so that's complete. We're excited by that. We did notice however, while we were putting the, the roofs on, that the, the central structure did have damage to the EFIS or the exterior finish insulation system. And so we are having to go back and repair that. And that was due to the fact that these buildings have been without a roof. They've been exposed since they were constructed. So that's damage that we've also added to our claim, which I'll talk about here in just a moment. Up next for the parking ramps, we're installing quite a few cameras inside and around the peripheral, periphery I should say, of the parking ramps. And that will definitely boost security and hopefully add to a more safe environment. The other thing we're going to be working on is trying to figure out how to keep these pigeons out of there. These pigeons are creating a problem for us, of course, on the cleanliness and sort of just annoyance standpoint. So staff are working to try to figure that particular problem out as well. As it relates to the parking structures, as you know, we began litigation on those structures back in March of 2018. I thought it was probably due to give you an update on where we stand on this. The attorneys are working through our discovery phase of the process. As you know, there's quite a bit of work to do on that front. We were successful in keeping the venue in Ward County. That was one of the activities that we had to go through, which was good for us. And as well, we are working through the 12,000 documents that have so far been discovered. We've whittled those down and attorneys are working through that. We're finalizing the deposition dates between now and the next couple of months and we'll be scheduling those that need to be deposed. And essentially right now, it looks like the suit's likely going to be scheduled for September of 2020. It has been bumped a few times, so I can't tell you with confidence if that's really where it's going to be. But there is certainly an enormous amount of work. We're having to reach out to a number of different folks that, you know, worked for the city in the past and no longer work for us, different contractors, different, different experts and all of that sort of stuff. So it's quite the undertaking. I can tell you that everybody's been very cooperative and I'm grateful for that. So more to come on this, but it is a slow process as the legal system tends to, you know, sort of be that way. Next up, we'll talk about the Free Dump Week results. I won't spend much time on this other than to say we've had a record year this last year. Of course, we have, Free Dump Week is essentially run through about December 23rd through January 4th. These are great numbers if you're looking at an outreach, you know, from an outreach perspective, they're really not great numbers if you're looking at the amount of waste that we as a community send to the landfill. We essentially had a 40% increase in tickets at the scales, meaning people going through the gates. And as far as tons of use, we had a 40%, a 47% increase in total tonnage between 2018 and 2019. That is a lot of waste that's going through the landfill. And so, you know, we would like to just remind folks, you know, the best way to reduce waste is to, to not, to not essentially get waste, right? Try to avoid that. Our next event, because it is a popular event, the next Free Dump Week will be with the spring cleanup and that'll occur in early May. And of course, we'll announce that, those dates as we get closer to them. The Citizens Academy is being scheduled now. It'll take place between May 5th and the 26th. It'll be Tuesday nights at 6:00 PM. There'll be several sessions. Each of these sessions will cover different aspects of the police department, including patrol, crime scene response, special operations, use of force and a whole other myriad of topics. This will be fun. This is, I think, our second or third year in a row of having this after about a 10-year or so hiatus. If folks are interested, the applications are due by April the 18th. And of course, I've got Master Police Officer Aaron Moss's information here in the top right-hand corner, his phone number and his email because that's the, that's the officer you want to talk with in order to register. You have to be 18 or older and you do have to consent to a background check because we are taking you kind of behind the scenes. You can get to do all kinds of fun and great stuff. We want to make sure that that's safe for everybody who's attending. So that's a don't miss kind of situation as well. So, and I think several of you have gone through this in the past and have found it to be very educational and fun for that matter. So we encourage everyone who has an interest to do that. We have a local hero in the House to recognize. Essentially, the Minotoros have started a local superheroes award campaign. And through this effort, they identify through social media, a variety of different local superheroes that should be nominated and then eventually voted on. And our own Master Police Officer Aaron Moss was recognized as the Minotoros Local Superhero Award. I think Aaron's in the audience. There he is. Stand up, be recognized. There he is. Yeah. Another fine staff member making us look good in the city. We love that kind of stuff. In any event, we're very grateful for the Minotoros recognizing one of our own and we're very grateful for all that Master Police Officer Aaron Moss does for our community. He is an outstanding local superhero. Up next, we have a sort of bitter farewell here. And I appreciate the mayor joining me. We're going to talk just a little bit here and, and give a formal goodbye to, to two folks from the police department. And so I think Barb, where are you? I thought I saw you here earlier. Barb, you want to come on up? And then Chief Olson, maybe we'll do Barb first and then we'll have the chief come up here in just a minute. Barb, we kind of said a lot to you. Yeah, I sort of feel like I could turn around here. Is that all right? So we had a good time with you guys at the, the sort of informal retirement party on Friday. So, but I know it was important to, to the mayor especially and, and to me as well in front of, in front of the community and on television for this, for that matter, to recognize you for an outstanding career with the police department. We're so grateful for all that you've done for us. And you leave a tremendous legacy and a wonderfully well-run PSAP department. We're just so grateful. I know the mayor has something he'd like to say and share with you as well.
Absolutely. So we have a lot of folks with the men and women in blue here with the, with the protective shields that know Barb very well, but many in our community likely don't. Barb, more than 30 years, 31 years now, is it? Is that correct? 32. 32 years, central dispatch for the Minot Police Department. And as I explained during the retirement ceremony, these are the calming voices at the other end when 911 is called. And the amount of years that have been dedicated to the citizens of Minot being that calming voice and being dedicated to the career, with the sacrifices at home, as she explained, there was a lot of rotating shifts early on and very, not the most family-friendly working shifts that a person could, could have. But of course, the McPeak family sacrificed and Barb spent a lot of time serving the folks of Minot and to likely many that she never met, but was fortunate to be at the other end, working with all of our great men and women in uniform, making sure that the citizens of Minot are safe. So Barb, I did hold out the city coin, the office of mayor coin for you tonight as a thank you for your 32 years of service to the citizens of Minot. Thank you, Barb.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just also do the same for Chief Olson as he retires from the city. Just want to read a few statistics about Chief Olson and then I know you have something for him as well. Jason Olson began his career with the city of Minot and it's been debated, but I think we've settled on May 9th, right? 1988 as a police officer. He was promoted to senior officer May 10th, 1992, and then again to sergeant on March 3rd, 1997. Finally, not finally, but he was also promoted to lieutenant on March 20th, 2004, then to captain on March 22nd, 2010, and then finally to chief on April 14th, 2012, where he faithfully served in that office until last Friday. Jason's career included experience in all aspects of policing inside the department and included 18 years with the SWAT team, with six of those years being the SWAT commander. He was named the 2004 Police Officer of the Year by the Optimist Club. Jason's leadership and skills have long been recognized both inside and outside of his department, earning him the reputation of being not only hardworking, but also fair, honest and extremely well-respected. The city of Minot would like to thank and recognize Jason Olson for his loyal years of dedicated service to the city and to the police force. We are so grateful for your legacy. We are grateful so much for what you leave behind and for the shape that you leave our city and our department and our community. And thank you so much for all of your years of service, Jason.
Now at the retirement ceremony, we stood up and said quite a few words on Friday. But I don't know if a plaque ever goes far enough for the amount of sacrifice that goes into the work that a police officer and their family certainly goes through, through the entire career, the amount of hours that have been put forth. But I think it's, it's certainly more than worthy today to present you with this. In the name of the people of the city of Minot, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Jason Olson, Police Chief, May 9th, 1988 to January 31st, 2020, in grateful recognition of outstanding public service faithfully rendered to the city of Minot. Jason, we are saying goodbye to a great chief, but I know that your leadership and the leadership that you were brought up through has left the city of Minot in great hands and has a reputation that I think many across the country could only hope to have with our men and women who wear the shields of protection for our communities. Thank you, chief. And two, I wanted to make sure that before you go, that off of the office of mayor for the city of Minot, one more coin to add to your collection, chief. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. If you wouldn't mind staying up here also, Mr. Mayor as well. We have an important event as well tonight, not only saying goodbye to an outstanding chief and a wonderful community leader, but welcoming another into our ranks. Captain Klug, now our police chief, Chief Klug, I'll have to get used to that. He has been a longstanding member of our community, having lived in Minot for more than 20 years. Would you come up and join me? He was a graduate of the Peace Officers Training Course in Northwestern University's Police Staff and Command Program. And he possesses a bachelor's degree in management and graduated from the prestigious FBI National Academy. Mr. Klug has been employed with the Minot Police Department for nearly 25 years, having served in all sorts of different capacities in his growth throughout the department, which has been just outstanding. Most recently, he served as captain, making him quite familiar with the city, its culture, its issues, its contracts, its local politics and its local leaders. Currently, he holds more than 4,100 hours, 4,100 hours of formal certified law enforcement training. Absolutely impressive. In summary, he possesses the knowledge, skills and abilities to become our next chief of police and I am so thrilled that you've accepted the job. We'd like to formally recognize your acceptance of the position tonight by having a swearing in ceremony. So if you and the mayor wouldn't, I'm going to flip the mic over here. I think the mayor is going to swear you in. Maggie, I think if you wouldn't mind as well, you want to come join? This is the chief's wife, right? So I think what we'll do is we'll have, we'll have the badge, the swearing of the oath and then Chief Olson will come up and he will do one pin and the badge. And then Maggie, if you wouldn't mind finishing it off, that would be fantastic. Thank you.
If you would, please raise your right hand. Aye. State your name.
Aye. John Klug.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And the Constitution of the state of North Dakota.
And ordinances of the city of Minot.
And ordinances of the city of Minot.
And I will honor the peace officer's code of conduct.
And I will honor the peace officer's code of conduct.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
And faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the officer of chief of police.
Of the office of chief of police.
In the county of Ward.
County of Ward.
And the state of North Dakota.
State of North Dakota.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chief Klug. Now, chief, I'm only going to take a moment here, but for the citizens of Minot, on a national search of candidates that we had put out there to ensure that the very best for the chief, for the position of chief was chosen, the finalist was a number of three different candidates. And I am just ecstatic to say that of course, the best and brightest that has worked through our system and dedicated to the people of Minot rose to the challenge and absolutely was the best candidate for the position. So Chief Klug, I am honored to have you accept this position. Of course, with anything with government, we have to always have paperwork. So I do need a signature from you and we'll, we'll sign over here so that people can actually see, but we do need a signature to make it official. Chief, thank you again. Thank you. Appreciate it.
This has been, yeah, I had second thoughts about inviting the family. But no, it's really, without family, I probably would not be here. I've got a, you know, my wife Maggie, my mom is here, my sister Nancy, my sister Amy, sister Mary, her husband Dean, my son-in-law, which is still weird to say, but son-in-law and my grandson, my daughter Mackenzie in the back, my sister-in-law Peggy, my brother Tim, my cousin Lance, my sister-in-law Paula and my brother Bill. Of course, a lot of other friends that came out tonight. I appreciate you taking time. My Lieutenant Colonel Brandon McKinnon, he's, I'm the honorary commander for their unit on the Air Force Base, 791st Mississauga Forces Squadron. Thanks for showing up today. My colleagues, my coworkers, you deserve this. You deserve everything that we're about to go through together. Trust me. But it'll be a good time. I look forward to the challenge. City Council, mayor, city manager, thank you. And thanks for the selection committee. Have a good evening.
We have just one last slide here. This is a promotional video, very short, just to advertise the State of the City event, which of course, again, is Thursday this week. So without further ado, we'll go ahead. Mr. Mayor, city council members, that's all I have for you tonight unless you have questions for me.
Any questions for our city manager? Yes, Alderman Strait.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tom, if you and Mr. Zakin prior to the February 24th special NDR meeting could get us an updated budget of where we stand and kind of the benchmarks that are on the horizon, I, I think many of us are looking forward to that frank conversation and discussion about priorities and wants and needs. And I, I find that I'm going to want to look at the numbers prior to, please, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Strait. Mr. Mayor, Alderman Strait, we'll absolutely do that. It was my intention to have that for you at the meeting, but I appreciate the reminder we can get it to you in advance. That way you can be thinking about it certainly before the meeting. We'll do that.
What are the questions for our city manager?